I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So next up is normally roll call, but I think we should address that we have two alternates sitting tonight. And if you want to go ahead.
Yeah, so there's the two vacancies and we have all seats filled with the two alternates, Allen and McDonald, sitting in.
No, not, no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I got me alternate.
Yes. So I'll go ahead and call roll call. Joseph Krug.
Here.
Eric McDonald.
Here.
Jan Seer.
Here.
Kevin Willner.
Here.
Steve Allen.
Here.
Andrew Creel.
Here.
And Chair McAlpine.
Here.
So we do have a quorum sitting for this evening's meeting tonight, so we can go ahead and proceed. You all, what?
Motion to approve roll call?
I don't think I.
No, go ahead. Okay. Next up would be the approval of the agenda, so we all received into a copy of the agenda, the proposed agenda in our packet. There's also one for anyone who's here in the audience who would like one. So we just need a motion. We can do a all-call vote to approve the agenda as presented. If everyone is in favor, we'll go ahead and take a motion to approve the agenda.
Actually, we'll need to add an election for vice chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes, yes.
So if we can get a motion to add for the vice chair to be added to other business.
Yes, so we'll add number two, under other business, we have to reappoint or reelect a vice chair to serve. So with that change, Mr. Allen, would you still like to make the motion to approve the agenda?
Yes, I would.
Great, so we just need a support?
Support.
Are the other, are the two members out permanently? They're gone.
Yes. It was, it was decided and they've been notified, so we are going to proceed with the two alternates to take their places and then we will ask for applications for alternates, I believe, unless we have some people in the queue.
Yeah, we'll ask for applications for alternates.
Perfect, okay. Okay, so all-call, or how do you say it? All-call, is that right?
Voice call.
Voice call for approval of the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so the agenda has been approved with the addition of item number two under other business. Next up is the approval of minutes. Our meeting from June 12th, 2023, the minutes were included in our packet. Hopefully, we've all had a chance to review them and at this point, we will take any comments or questions, revisions, and then if there are none from the group, we will go ahead and we'll just need a motion to approve the minutes as well as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, there are no revisions? Okay.
I'll support.
Okay. So we can do a voice call for the approval of the minutes from the June 12th, 2023 meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, there are, there is no old business to discuss at this time, so next up is new business. It is application number PBA 623, Operation Grow LLC 2222, 11 Mile Road, located on the north side 11 Mile Road between Henley and Berkeley. They have requested our consideration of a mural that they're proposing to put on the side of the building. Our responsibility this evening is to determine whether or not there's a message on that mural and because it is outside of the Downtown Development Authority, that is why it's in front of us. So Ms. Anderson, if you could just give us an overview of what they're requesting, please?
Yes, per city ordinance, section 94.2, any mural or work of art that does not include a commercial message is to be determined by the zoning board of appeals. 2222 11 Mile is currently in the process of renovations for Butter Provisioning Center and would like the zoning board of appeals to approve a mural work of art at 2222 11 Mile. It's not located in the DDA and it's not eligible for the DDA mural program. Therefore, the, the method of approving a proposed mural is contingent upon the zoning board of appeals. We are asking the zoning board of appeals to make a determination whether or not the installation of the proposed design on the west facade at 2222 11 Mile would constitute a commercial message. We ask that the zoning board of appeals to discuss the following. If the ZBA determines that the proposed design does not contain a commercial message, it shall be considered a mural work of art and the applicant can proceed with installation. If the zoning board of appeal determines that the proposed design does, does contain a commercial message, the design would be subject to the regulations of the sign ordinance, including heights, right, you know, area and et cetera.
Okay, so first off, what we have to do is we will hear from the petitioner, anyone from the audience wishes to participate, we'll discuss it as normal. Our first task would be to determine if there is a message within the mural that they're proposing and if we decide there is, then we need to discuss it as a second item and to, we need to grant them a variance. So if we could go ahead and have the petitioner come forward and state their name and address. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, we're supposed to ask if there's any questions for you guys, right?
I had one correction.
Yes.
So this is just to determine if the mural is a work of art, a variance is not on the table.
Okay.
It's just for the work.
Okay, so simple, it's either yes or no, so, okay, perfect.
Hey, thank you. My name is Danny Amori. I'm from 2222 11 Mile and we're here to present our mural. Excuse me, I've got Kobe Solomon, who is the artist, and Chris Clamp, who is one of our business partners here. Kobe will kind of go into the inspiration and details of the art, but we chose him as our artist because, you know, A, he's a friend of the company, but also he's got a lot, ton of experience. He did the mural on, at the Mori in Royal Oak and also the big, I don't know the title of it, but.
Russell Athletic.
The Russell Industrial Center.
Camaro and Russell.
So we think he's definitely fit to, you know, do the, do the job and just pull up the rendering. Okay, that's right. So.
Before you start, can you just give your name and address for the record as well, please?
Sure, sure. My name's Kobe Solomon. Address is 5300 Rayton Street, Detroit, Michigan.
Thank you.
48224. And how many people here are familiar with M.C. Escher?
I looked it up, yep.
Okay. Very, very famous lithographer and actually mathematician. This is one of his most famous prints. A lot of people have seen this called Relativity. There's no up or down and when they first approached me to do this, we had a pretty broad range of concepts that we could go with, but I wanted to go with something that was visually appealing, that was going to be interesting, that was going to be interesting to people that might not even be interested in what the Provisioning Center is selling. Maybe somebody could come and catch a photo op just because of what's on the wall. So I began with that Escher print as the inspiration. Of course, they're called butter, so I kind of chose to use a lot of yellow, obviously. But what I ended up having to do because of the dimensions of the wall was take M.C. Escher's design as a seed, if you will, and I had to quadruple it. I had to make four different vanishing points, but if you look at this, you can see that there's elements of Berkeley in this piece. You know, I've got theater implied over here. We've got a couple of skate parks under here. There would be no up or down anywhere in this piece. And in the center, there'd be a little doorway into the world to engage people in a photo op, so we can take selfies with it. But that's about the, I don't think of it.
Okay. All right, thank you. Do, is there anyone that has any questions for the petitioner? Yes.
I'm looking at the picture that was in the packet.
Yeah.
And there's a couple of little things that I can't really tell what they are. Like there's a person next to the building with the awning. Do you have that in the final drawing? Or there's, there's the person, then there's stairs and then there's something that looks like it's hanging.
If you, maybe, can we just, maybe we can have him bring this up, would that help?
I'll show you where.
Do you mind if I come up?
No, yeah, that's fine. So like right here?
Oh, oh.
And then there's stairs and this, and I can't really.
That's the Berkeley sign. It's not a person.
Oh, oh. Oh, I see. And what's the little thing that's?
There wasn't a little hedge next to it, but when I was coloring it, I just kind of decided to leave it out because I wanted that, you know, City of Berkeley sign to kind of pop out. But again, there's no, in this composition, there's no up or down, there's no right side up. Things that might appear as if they're hanging, when you look at them again, they're actually on the floor or something. It's just upside down.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions from anyone? Okay, so at this point, we, you can go ahead and have a seat. I'll close that portion and see if there's anyone from the public here to speak, seeing there's only three of you, I think we're good to say there's no one here. Did we have any, did we receive any correspondence? No. So we'll go ahead and close the public portion of that and at this point, we can open it up for discussion amongst ourselves and remember once again, what we're determining is whether or not the mural as they've presented has or contains any type of commercial message. Mr. Allen.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The, as it stands right now, in my mind, that's a piece of art. And it is not an advertising piece, but it could be made to be an advertising piece if that, a photo of that mural becomes part of the business package of the company and it goes into advertising or anything else. It becomes an extension of the sign in my world. Just wanted to get that out.
But I don't think that's what we're, if that happens, we're not charged with that. I mean, we're just here to decide whether it's, I think, whether it's, has a commercial message or not, right? Or no?
Right, you're here to decide if it's a commercial message, but if you were to put a condition on your determination that the applicant shouldn't use it as part of their marketing materials, you could do that.
Yes.
Which we've done that in the past, if I'm not mistaken, one of the other ones that came through, we have.
Is there any guidance on the commercial, I mean, commercial message can be a lot of things, art can be a lot of things. So is there any guidance from either the, the code or our past precedent as to an example of a situation where there's no words contained, but a commercial message was found?
So that's a, a good example right off the bat would be words. But beyond that, you're looking at whether or not it's specifically related to the business. So for example, if I had, like a grocer and I had a mural with a whole bunch of like fruits and vegetables and pantry items, that might lend itself to a commercial message, not necessarily, but that would be your determination to make.
Like Loom, when they were here last month, you know, obviously part of their marketing is a flower itself, which is, which is directly related to the business that issue, which is why it was before us as a commercial message and had the restrictions and whatnot.
Well, that was, that was a sign.
Right.
It wasn't part of the mural, but, but that's a good example of how, yes, if they were to take their logo and paint it on the side of a building.
Right.
That's a more obvious case.
Okay.
So I guess I have a question because, you know, in the agreement, you know, that says what a commercial message is, you know, list it, you know, the mere, the wording of it basically says calls out attention, calls attention to a business. I mean, the mere fact of a giant wall that's yellow calls attention to it, calls attention to it. But, I mean, so the wording is a little, is a little, if you, if you take that exactly word by, word by word, you are calling attention to the business by having that there. Now, do I think there's a message in there that, for the business, no, but the way it's worded is a little, it's a little strange to me.
And we could look at that wording, I think that's a fair point. In the past, this board has approved murals as not containing a commercial message, even though they might, yes, call attention to a building by the very fact that it's painted.
Right.
And just so I'm clear, words in and of themselves on there, I mean, the only words I saw, correct me if I'm wrong, is Berkeley? That's the only, that's the only word? Okay. And that, that in and of itself does not render it under a certain category, you know, the absence of words, right? I mean.
Correct.
Okay.
When I was saying words, I was referring to if it said butter on the side.
Right, right.
For example, or something like that.
Can we make a correction there? That's not true. There are more words.
Oh, okay.
They're just kind of small things, which we can remove.
So what are the words?
Yeah.
They're, they're on a separate layer, I didn't really know what it was.
Just trying to make sure you saw it.
So right here it says, "Spread the love." And right here, it says, "Let's build a butter world."
So it is, is direct.
We had, we'd asked, so I discussed this with Kristen before we submitted it and essentially we said, you know, we'll submit this as is and then if it comes up where we can't put those words on, you know, we'll not do it, but.
Yeah.
We just, we wanted to submit something, we obviously prefer to have that, but if it's determined.
Sure.
That we can't, we're, we're cool doing this without that.
Okay.
Those are part of our marketing campaign, just to be clear.
Spread the lo, oh, so what was the first one?
Spread the love.
Okay.
And we're building a butter world.
That's the only two things that it says?
That.
And Berkeley.
And Berkeley.
So that, that would be a business, a message to me.
Yeah.
Yep.
Both of the.
Because that's like a business motto.
Yeah.
It's in their marketing.
Yep.
Yeah, we're happy to delete those.
Okay.
I just don't have to put on the wall, it makes my job. A lot easier.
I think without the wording.
With Berkeley.
Yes, but without the two phrases, I think it's more art than, I don't think it has a commercial message to it.
I would agree.
Absolutely.
Okay, so is that a motion coming from this side of the table?
I, I move that if the two phrases that are proposed on the current signage or the current layout or drawing are removed, you can leave Berkeley in, but if the other two phrases are removed, we would consider this a piece of art as opposed to a commercial, commercial message.
I'll support.
Okay, so can we have a roll call vote, please?
Member Willner?
Uh, yes.
Member Allen?
Yes.
Member Creel?
Yes.
Member Krug?
Yes.
Member McDonald?
Yes.
Member Seer?
Yes.
And Chair McAlpine?
Yes. So obviously, as you heard, we can keep Berkeley in, but the other two phrases need to be removed and you would be good to go. So at that point, you just deal with all the normal ordinances and regulations that you have to deal with as you perform that, so.
Thank you. Nice looking piece.
Yeah, congrats, good luck.
Thanks. Yeah, thank you, Matt. Thank you. Thanks, Matt.
Okay, so next up will be old business.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, my agenda is somewhere.
You need it?
I got it right there, thank you. Other business. Other business, sorry, other business. So we also received in our packet a revised zoning board of appeals rules of procedure amendment. We just, everyone has hopefully had a chance to review that and we just need to vote, to approve that, or is it just?
Right, you would need to approve that.
Okay.
Change.
Are there any questions about the, the revised rules of procedure that were presented?
So were there a lot of, like, I don't know what was, what was revised from what, were there a lot of changes from what it previously was?
There's one red line in there.
Yeah, just one red line as far as the resignation.
It's on the first page, section two, membership, they added section C.
Oh. Oh, when I printed it, oh, maybe, okay.
Maybe if.
Maybe I'm printing color, maybe.
Exactly. So if there's, those were the only changes that they have recommended that we make, so we just need to then make a motion and a support to receive the, the new revisions and accept those moving forward, the rules of procedure.
Motion to approve the additional language as presented.
I'll support.
Okay, we'll take a roll call vote for that as well, please.
Member Allen?
Yes.
Member Creel?
Yes.
Member Krug?
Yes.
Member McDonald?
Yes.
Member Seer?
Yes.
Member Willner?
Yes.
Chair McAlpine?
Yes.
All right.
So next up with Mr. Ular, no longer serving, we do need to reappoint or reelect a vice chair. So at this point, we can take nominations for that or from the, from the floor or, I mean, do we, we should pick someone today, correct?
Yeah, ideally, yes.
I don't know if anyone has any interest in that, but go ahead and discuss that.
What does it require beyond our monthly and educational requirements?
Nothing, you just would have to run a meeting if I'm not here.
Oh.
That's about all.
And now Mr. Krug, he's a very smart man and respect to his efforts up here.
That's a good nomination.
I personally would not like that position. I just, I'm not that type of person.
All right, Mr. Allen, I nominate Mr. Allen.
I would, if so, if this body so decides, I would be more than happy to fill that role.
Anyone else?
Good with that.
If, if Mr. Allen would like the position, but I'd be willing to do it also, so.
Good.
Okay. So at this point, we have, we've never had this come up before. We've had two people, but it, you know.
So you'd have to make a motion and then vote on, on one?
Okay, so we have, if we have someone, someone, okay, so we have to have, someone has to make a motion to nominate someone. Which, then technically, there's already, there was one on the floor, is that correct?
Yeah, Member Creel basically made that motion, but there wasn't a second.
Okay, so we need a second to his motion or we, if we don't have a second, then we can entertain another motion?
A second.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion and a second, so we can go ahead and vote. Mr. Allen would be the new vice chair replacing Mr. Ular, so we can go ahead and take a roll call vote for that, please?
Okay.
Can I ask a quick question? Are the, are the alternates current members of the commit, of the board now?
So.
So I can, we're in a little bit of a date situation.
Right.
The two vacancies that are present right now, that the alternates are filling today, the alternates would rise to regular members and we would seek new alternates. So at the next city council meeting, the alternates would be appointed as regular members or.
Technically, they're still alternates.
Technically, they're still alternates.
Still able to vote.
What's that?
Still able to vote.
Right, still able to vote. I would say as long as the rules and procedures don't speak to the fact that alternates cannot serve, you would, which, if someone wants to check that real quick while I'm talking.
I'm fine, no. I didn't see anything when I was looking through it earlier today.
Then I don't see why you couldn't do that. Secondly, if it did and you were still interested in having Member Allen as the vice chair, you could always postpone consideration of this until the next meeting, when he would be a regular member. So you'd have those two options in front of you. But do keep in mind, if Vice Chair McAlpine is absent, or if Chair McAlpine is absent, there would be a space on the board for an alternate to be sitting, just by case of the absence.
I don't see anything in there.
Yeah, it just says, "The officers shall take office at the next meeting after the election." So technically.
Yeah.
If they are voted by the city council before our next meeting, then they would become official commissioner, they would become, they would assume their official seat. So I think that that, that would meet that criteria.
I think so.
I don't see anything else, so. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor and a support, so if we can take a roll call vote, please? Member Creel?
Yes.
Member Krug?
Yes.
Member McDonald?
Yes.
Member Seer?
Yes.
Member Willner?
Yes.
Member Allen?
Yes.
And Chair McAlpine?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You would have been a great vice chair as well.
Thanks, Paul.
All right. All right, so we have closed out all the other business. It is time for the staff and board member report. Mr., so that would be, we'll go first, right? And then Mr. Henenin?
Oh, yep, I can, I can go first.
Okay.
Um, so the only thing that there really is to update you all on is the zoning ordinance steering committee. You will have summary memos going forward in your packet, but just to let you know what they've started on in their second meeting. So they started with the organizational, organizational outline and there were some recommendations and agreement that there's some consolidation that should take place, that we have a few too many zoning districts. So expect that those will be kind of consolidated down, particularly when it comes to single family. We have four or five single-family districts right now that have very similar standards. So those are likely to be consolidated. And they also started to begin to discuss which districts should include specific standards for site design. So that would be a focus more on the layout of the site than how we would usually look at the zoning ordinance, which is usually just a use-focused setup. This is going to really get into how the site should be laid out by zoning district. So we're going to continue that specific corridor discussion at our next meeting, which is in a few days. And then we're also going to begin to talk about potential updates to the standards for single-family neighborhood districts as well.
Great, thank you. Mr. Henenin?
Yeah, I didn't have anything specific for the ZBA, but wanted to use this time to share some information with the public. That with the failure of May's tax mileage, the cities needed to increase our fees to be able to continue to pick up yard waste. So we're doing that with a tag that's needed to be purchased for each bag or for each can for each week that it's picked up. And that cost is $3 a bag or $2.50 for four and $2.50 each for four. And those can be purchased at Public Safety 24/7 or at the library during their normal hours. And those places are cash only. They can be picked up at City Hall with cash and card, but credit card has a $1.50 fee. And Durst is also selling them at their cost and that's $2.50 each there. So then the cities also had to discontinue its chipper route. So if you have branches that are too large to fit into yard waste pickup, unfortunately, now you'll need to arrange for a private contractor to come and pick those up for you. That's all I had tonight, thank you.
Can we ask questions about that?
Sure.
So does the city have recommendations on like a chip, a service that could do that? Because I would have no idea how to find, you know.
Yeah, and we understand that. And one initiative I'm looking at, actually on the suggestion of a resident, so I didn't come up with this on my own, but we're exploring whether we can have a preferred vendor where we can negotiate a price. And then the city's out of the loop, you would contact them directly and they would do the work at the negotiated price, but that's still early. We still have to figure out, is there any vendors that would be interested in it? You know, could we make that work? But we understand that, yeah, that's a difficult question and it's going to be a difficult thing for people, so we're trying to find a way to make it as easy as we can.
I have a question too. Obviously, these elections have consequences and things like that, but does the city have any plan to or ability to renew the proposal in a year or so? I mean, or are there ways to tweak it? I think sometimes people don't do some of the research on the front end and then they realize, oh crap, the consequences of our actions have led to this. Does the city plan on bringing this up ever again, this type of funding proposal? I know the bonding is on the ballot next month, but I was just curious about the strategy.
We're potentially looking at November 2024 to bring it back. That's tentative and there's going to be community discussions between now and then. So, you know, there's nothing set on, that's not for sure, there's nothing set on how much the request would be, where it goes to, that's all. be, where it goes to, that's all still to be discussed and a conversation with the community before we go forward.
Okay, so at this point, we'll, thank you for your report, Mr. Henenin. It is time for public comments, but seeing as there's no one here, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting for this evening and do we have any applicants for August that you know of yet? Kim, any applicants?
Uh, no.
Nope, no August.
Well, the deadline is this coming Friday, the 14th, so, yeah, nothing so far. I will let everyone know once that's done. So if you're going to adjourn, if you just want to call a motion to adjourn?
Yep, we'll take a motion.
I, I do have one, are we obligated to put on the record the changes to this body in terms of two alternates?
Yeah.
So...
I, I just, I mean, I don't, if it's not the right form, that's fine, I just figured if we're changing or elevating two alternates.
So that would be on the council agenda in July.
Okay.
For you, Member Creel and you, Member Allen, to be elevated to regular members.
Okay.
Staff will be recommending that that's the case and then we would go out and search for two alternate members to be appointed as well. Right now, we have two vacancies, so you're sitting here this evening, unless there's a strong objection from council, I would expect you'd be here as regular members at the next meeting.
And then as far as once we get applicants, myself and Mr. Henenin review whoever the applicants are and then we make a recommendation to the city council who we'd like to appoint to fill those vacancies for the alternate positions.
Okay.
All right, so if nothing else, we'll go ahead and take a motion to adjourn the meeting?
移到了
Support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Have we ever marched into a...
Oh, did you say 7:30?